2024 meeting of the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners. We're going to start, as always, with a roll call followed by the announcement of the open public meetings law. Lou?
County Commissioners Cruz, Duffy, Gallo, James, Lapour, Deputy Director Lozara, Director Bartlett.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location. And included in the public notice on September 30th, 2024, in the record, in the Herald News, it was submitted on the 30th, and it was in the Herald News in the record on October 3rd, 2024. The Passaic County Board of County Commissioners on September 10th adopted Resolution R. 24-747, which calls for the location of the regular meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024 at 5:30 to be changed from the Passaic County Community College Environmental Center to the Passaic County Administration Building located at 401 Grand Street, second floor, Patterson, New Jersey. Official action will be taken.
Thank you very much, Lou. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation and moment of silence.
Please join me in saluting the flag of the greatest country in the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, of the great land, and the littlest of liberty and justice for all.
Father Ryan, would you do us the honors?
Good and gracious God, we thank you for the gift of today. We thank you for all the blessings you send our way, which at times we forget to notice. Give us eyes that see the goodness in this world and the goodness in so many people that come our way. Give us good health. Give us a right mind, a good attitude, and always be grateful for everything we have. And we ask this forever and ever. Amen.
Director, may I have one second to just acknowledge?
Sure, absolutely.
You know, in enough organizations, as everyone is, and whenever there's a change, I'm sorry, whenever there's a change, there's always tension or friction or egos getting in the way, or whatever it might be. This man made the transition, a very difficult transition, smooth. There's no ego in this guy, you know? And he didn't puff up his chest, he just did his job. And that's what he needed to do. And this county and this Sheriff's Department is blessed in having him. Amen.
Amen to that thing. Thank you, Father. Please remain standing for one more moment of silence, as we remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces and all those who've died from COVID-19. It's nice to see this number has not gone up since our last meeting, especially the 2,312 residents of Passaic County. Thank you. I have a motion for approval of the minutes of October 8th.
Make that motion. County Commissioners Cruz, Duffy, Gallo, Deputy Director Lozara, Director Bartlett.
Yes. Going to have a motion for the approval of Proclamations 1 and 2.
County Commissioners Cruz, Duffy, Gallo, Deputy Director Lozara, Director Bartlett.
Yes. And that brings us to the Administrator's Report. Matthew?
Yes, thank you, Director. It is, as Father Ryan mentioned, Italian Heritage Month, and we are honoring our acting sheriff, Gary Giordina. I'll call down Commissioner Lozara and Commissioner Gallo. They have a proclamation. I could just say, on a personal note, it was a very trying year. And, you know, I have a vivid memory of meeting with Gary a week or so after we lost Sheriff Birdnick and saying that, you know, I like to think that everything happens for a reason, and there was a reason why you were the executive under sheriff, because your temperament and your leadership was what Passaic County needed to lead us through a very trying time. So with that, turn it over to Commissioner Lozara.
So we have a very nice proclamation, but I think for everybody here that knows Gary, we know the kind of person he is. Dedicated and control, empathetic. I think you lead with it not only what you know in your brain, but also you follow your heart. And you know, and I just learned something new about his time. It's breakaway. Anyway, and I asked my colleague, Commissioner Gallo, to come down, and I wanted to invite him to say a few words, because, you know, Italians, we kind of stick together. Anyway, I'm going to take a moment and read this proclamation, then I... Or do you want to speak before I read it?
No. I just want to congratulate our sheriff. He's doing a great job, and I hope he stick with us. Please. Thank you.
Yeah, you're going to stay? Ooh, I'm putting you on the spot. But you know what? Gary did step up at a very emotional time for all of us. And he's been leading this department with such integrity and perseverance. It's just amazing what you've stepped up and did in this year since January. I'm just going to read this now. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic has a desire to recognize Passaic County Acting Sheriff Gary F. Giordina in honor of Italian Heritage Month. And whereas, can I just, I'll just say Gary, because we all know you, holds a Bachelor of Science degree in Criminal Justice from Jersey City State College, now known as New Jersey City University, a Master of Administrative Science degree from Fairleigh Dickinson University, and is a Certified Public Manager. Whereas Sheriff Gary began his career as a patrol officer in Clifton, right, in uniform, before reassignment to the Street Crime Narcotic Unit, where he remained after he was promoted to Sergeant. Whereas Sheriff Gary served as Patrol Sergeant prior to his promotion to Lieutenant, where he took command of the Field Operations Bureau, which was made up of Uniformed Services, Patrol Community Police, and Bicycle and Traffic Motorcycle Divisions. He was then promoted to Chief in 2010 until 2014, when he retired. Gary then joined the Passaic County Sheriff's Department as Business Administrator in 2014, after retiring as Chief of Police in Clifton, after being there for 36 years, and was sworn in as Executive Under Sheriff in January 2022, and became Acting Sheriff in January 2024. Gary commands the day-to-day operational activities of the department, oversees policy development, strategic planning, research function, which include the development and implementation of master plans, the development of department policy and budget, and of comprehensive research. And he's still so calm. How do you do all that? Gary is an avid motorcycle rider and is the Secretary of the Blue Knights of New Jersey, Chapter 13, a member of the Passaic County Chiefs Association, New Jersey State Chiefs Association, a life member of the New Jersey Police Honor Legion, and New Jersey Italian American Police Society. He is also a fourth-degree member of the Knights of Columbus. Gary has been married since 1983, has two sons and four grandchildren. And so the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners, that it hereby be proclaimed and publicly recognized, and we applaud Gary for the significant contributions he has made and the exemplary service he has devoted to the County of Passaic and to the community. And be further proclaimed that this board congratulates Gary for his vigilant service to the city of Clifton, County of Passaic, and the state of New Jersey, while protecting the citizens of this country for over 40 years. And we wish him continued success and good health for many years to come. And we thank you, Gary.
So it's true, I spent 36 years in Clifton. I did start when I was five years old, so you can do the math. You know, I'm very humbled by this honor. I'm not the one that likes to be in the spotlight. So again, I thank, I thank the Commissioners for this. It was a very trying year. I think we all know that. I couldn't do it alone. The rank and file and my administrative staff stepped up to the occasion. So I have to thank my employees. I always said when I was in Clifton, there are no unimportant positions or people. Everybody plays an important role in its success. And I can't say that it's even more so here under these difficult circumstances. I also, during my career, have worked with a lot of administrations, city administrations. And I have to say that working with this county administration has been one outstanding experience for me. I can't thank this board behind me enough. They've been very supportive to me and the Sheriff's Office. And again, I can't thank them enough. This is probably the best administration over my 40-plus years in law enforcement that I've ever worked for. And I'm not just saying that because I did experience it, and I can't thank them enough. So I want to give them a big hand. And again, I just want to thank everybody for this. I'm very humbled by it. Thank you.
I'd like to invite my colleague, Commissioner Bartlett, down. And I'd like to ask Tony Vancheri to come on up. Come on. So we have our very close family friend here, Tony Vancheri. He's a Vietnam veteran, and we've worked so closely with him over the years, trying to help you and everything you do to help veterans. And one of the, two of the Open Space Grants this year for 2024 are going to three different... You know what? I should really let you explain where all the money's going, right?
Yes.
Yes. So I, here's Tony Vancheri. He'll explain to you where the money is going.
Of course, the first thing I would like to do is thank the Passaic County Commissioners for having our back, the veterans of Patterson and all of Passaic County. And we are so grateful that through this, Commissioners, we received a beautiful gift to the Vietnam veterans. It's in Wayne, the Vietnam Memorial Wall, which honors all our brothers and sisters from Vietnam that didn't come home. We also want to thank, over the years since 2008, the Passaic County Commissioners are batting a thousand when it comes to our grants to maintain the four Veterans Parks in Patterson. I was the Superintendent of Parks from 12 to 2007, from 1992, I'm sorry, from 1992 to 2007, I was the Superintendent of Parks. I couldn't get the money from the city to do what we were doing, because there were other grants that you gave to other playgrounds, which I was part of, some of the, our 9/11 playground on Buckley Park, which has been changed now. But we did that with your help and other parks that I was, me and Paul Vitran, the former Superintendent of DPW, wrote. So when I totaled the amount, we're talking $2 to $3 million that the Commissioners in this room have given the city of Patterson to our brothers and sisters who served and are still living today as an old guy like me. But this money, which started back in November of 2022, and where there was, and I have to mention, our Congressman, our late Congressman William Pasquale, helped us get a grant, a federal grant, which came to the veterans. And it was decided that that money would be better used, at that time, to the city of Patterson. And we had no problem with that, because it stayed in Patterson. And we are so grateful for our beloved United States Army veteran and Congressman William Pasquale. And then, as we moved along, we met with the Congressman and Mayor Andre Sayah, who has always supported us also. And the approach was to get money applied for the Open Space Grants. And that's what we did. When we met, me and John Carlos, John Franco, I do that all the time. I apologize to John Franco. Please tell him, Kelly. And we walked the three parks. The Vietnam Veterans Memorial Park, which honors the 33 sons from Patterson that didn't come home. And that's gotten some rough times lately because of the homeless men and this new law that we can't take these people off the streets, because it's public property. We've been able to remove some of their toilet areas and things like that. But that's going to get a beautiful uplifting, which includes more open area, benches to be able to reminisce on our fallen sons. And then we go to the Ralph DiMarco Antonio Memorial Park. Mr. DiMarco Antonio was a councilman in the First Ward, and he was also a combat wounded Marine in Saipan. So we need that. There's a major flooding problem there during rains, and of course, during the summertime, when they have the sprinkler system there. It's a very attractive park, and our mayor, Andre Sayah, really dressed up the commons field. And so, and then finally comes our Vietnam, yeah, the Veterans Memorial Park at Hayden Heights, which we call the Hill of Heroes. That represents most of the monuments that were scattered throughout the city. And I'm proud to say that, as Superintendent and the late Mayor Marty Barnes, listened to my proposal to, instead of having one group of 12 people and 25 people in this one, whether it was Korean War, World War I, we decided to contend, put them all together. The Vietnam Wall, the Vietnam Stone on Union Avenue was brought to the hill. The Korean Monument from West Side Park was brought to the hill. And I'm proud to say, as the Vietnam veterans, we were the ones that finally got some recognition for our World War II sons and daughters from Patterson up there. And as you know, the monument there was built in 1939. The sculpture on that is a real uniforms, the real weapon, an M1. The 45 is real. The bayonet that was been broken was real. They were, they were used during World War I. And our famous art sculpture, Federici Gaetano, built that. And we've had some minor problems with the wall, having cracks and things like that. And that's why John Franco is very much important to this project, because we're going to make it sure that we put the right things there. Now, most of our monuments in the city of Patterson are at the Hill of Heroes. It represents all the wars, as far back as the War of 1890, the Spanish-American War, all right, which we had two Pattersonians receive the Congressional Medal of Honor, and they are there. And up at the, at that park, the Hill of Heroes, we honored the women in 2010. And it represents, like I said, all of the men and women from Patterson and Passaic County there. So it, that's where the money is going to go. Madam Chair, I mean, Mr. Director and Madam Chair, because she was our chairperson with the Vietnam Vet Project. We would, one thing we, we do want, we do want to make sure that, I don't want to, at one project at a time. And I would like the support of the Commissioners to make sure that. I don't want the three parks done in one time. I want them one time, so we get it right, we do everything right. That's the way I did it over, since 2008. If I had two projects, I did one at a time with the money that was given to us by the Open Space and our Commissioners. So that's where the rehab, the rehab will go. I'm a little nervous tonight. I think my sugar's going down. But I'm so grateful to all of you, every one of you. You are batting a thousand when it comes to the council in Patterson since 2008, starting with Mr. Duffy, Mr. Bruce, and Mr. Lapour. They're both not here, it figures. But that's all right. And then every, and then Commissioner Lozara jumped in, and she was, she was there running. She hit the ground running when it came to the veterans. And I know her dad was a World War II veteran, and Mr. Duffy's brother, a Vietnam veteran, who we lost to Agent Orange, and his cancer. So there's, there's history back here. Mr. Lapour's son is a Marine in Iraq. So it, this is what it's all about. This county never forgot our veterans and will continue to remember us. And we're so grateful. And on behalf of the Patterson Veterans Council, thank you so much. And everyone here.
Absolutely. Well, first of all, if your, if your blood sugar's going down, the next stop I want you to make is the fridge in the conference room. We've got orange juice. Please just grab a bottle of orange juice, take care of yourself and your health. But all I want to add is that we're all accustomed to saying, "Thank you for your service," to veterans. And very often, we're talking about their time in the military. But when you talk about you, Tony Vancheri, and some of the other extraordinary veteran advocates here in Passaic County, when we say, "Thank you for your service," we're talking about everything since. We're talking about all the stuff that you just described of making sure that the veterans aren't forgotten, and that those that are still with us have the services and the connections and the opportunities that can improve their quality of life. So thank you for that service, just as much as thank you for all the lives that you saved in Vietnam as a combat medic. So thank you very much, and we're very proud to be part of acknowledging these three grants, these two grants and three projects here this evening.
And Tony, I just want to invite everyone on October 30th to come to Hayden Heights at 11 o'clock. We'll be presenting you with a ceremonial check and joining you in celebrating the funding you have and all the work you're going to be doing on those parks. So we... Okay.
Get a picture.
Thank you.
Get a picture with...
All right, Tom, come on, we're going to take a picture.
Director, just two other things to report. One, keeping with our theme of veterans, the, as you know, we've been working diligently, Janice DeJean, at the lead of our Division of Housing, on our development of 65 units of affordable housing for veterans and seniors in Pompton Lakes. I'm pleased to report that we opened bids two weeks ago, received a bid from a local Passaic County contractor for 19.6 million, which was within our budget. That contract was awarded by the Affordable Housing Corporation this afternoon. So soon we'll be breaking ground on that very exciting project. And the other thing, it's fitting that the sheriff is here. On your agenda, there is a resolution ratifying a memorandum of agreement with the rank and file sheriff's officers. And we have Officer Vareto here, who was on the negotiation committee. It was long and laborious negotiations, but we got there to what I think is a fair deal for the men and women, rank and file men and women of the sheriff's office, but also the taxpayers. So I'd recommend that being approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Matt. That is always, and all, all great news from your, your agenda there. So that brings us to County Commissioner Reports. I just want to mention two things. One's on our agenda, and one's coming up in just a couple of days. On our agenda, I want to let folks know that item number three on the consent agenda is an author, is a resolution where we're authorizing a contract to River North Transit LLC. This is a pilot microtransit project. When you're talking about transit, getting people to and from where they need to go, there's what transit experts call the first mile, last mile problem, which is how do you get from your house to the train, the bus, the nearby destinations where transit, it's, in the traditional sense, might not be practical. And there's an emerging movement called microtransit. If you ever go into Jersey City, you see the bright purple or fuchsia vans and vehicles in there that are microtransit. It's local. It's really hyperlocal. It's a quick trip, and it's a, it's a very low right, low rate, thanks to the way in which we're able to subsidize it. We are piloting Passaic County's very first microtransit project in the cities of Passaic and Clifton. That's going to be, we hope, a model for the future in the same way that we're seeing, as I say, in Jersey City and some of the other folks. And actually, River North Transit LLC is Jersey City's provider. They call it VIA. We're going to call it Passaic County MOVE. But it's going to be an exciting opportunity, starting, I think, next year, for residents of Passaic and Clifton, traveling within their cities and a little bit of an area around. So we're very happy about that. Sorry.
Want some orange juice?
How about a prayer, Father? I want to acknowledge our Passaic County surrogate, Zoila Casanova, who's with us here this evening. And I'm going to do the short version of this, because I'm hacking up a lung here. Election Day is coming up. Next time we meet, we'll already have been through it. Early voting starts this Saturday. Election Day is November 5th. Please, whoever you vote for, make your voice heard here in Passaic County. Thank you. Sandy?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Cruz? Just follow along on the list, guys, okay?
Save the trouble there, Director, but I just wanted to just continue the congratulations, congratulations for Acting Sheriff, who has done a wonderful job taking over, as you and as you have said.
Can we take a two-thirds vote with five people on the dais? Okay. Then let's move on to L1, Resolution Authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to Execute Budget Transfers Between the 2024 Budget Appropriations Pursuant to the Reference Law. Can I have a motion and second on L1?
Make that motion. Second. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. Consent agenda is M1 through M...
51.
51. Actually, first of all, are there any items that any Commissioners want to remove from the consent agenda and vote on separately? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adopt a consent agenda, M1 through 51?
I'll move it.
It was moved by Gallo.
Second.
By Lazara. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. That brings us to new business. Can I have a motion on the personnel?
I'll move it.
Second. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. Anything else before we adjourn?
Manja.
Manja, that's right. Everybody join us down. The crowd is small, there's going to be plenty, so come on down, enjoy our celebration of Italian heritage. Can I have a motion to...
Make that motion. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. (applause)